The Chair of the Board of Education for Metro Nashville Public Schools and I want to welcome you all here this evening. Thank you so much for accepting the invitation to come out. This is a very important issue that we need to discuss, so we appreciate you being here this evening. I want to just take a quick second to introduce our fellow board members that are here, starting from my left, Dr. Joanne Brannan, Dr. Sharon Gentry, Ms. Elisa Kim, our Budget and Finance Committee Chair, Mr. Will Pinkston, Ms. Anna Shepherd, and Mr. Michael Hayes. So again, thank you all for coming out today, and I will turn it over to Mr. Pinkston.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and welcome to the Martin Center. This is, as you all know, the site of the old Aiken Elementary School, and it serves as the hub for training and professional development of the district's 6,000 educators. As you know, this facility opened in 2008 after a public-private capital campaign led by the Nashville Public Education Foundation. I have seen a lot of these kinds of facilities around the country, and I can assure you this is one of the best. We very much appreciate the Council's support of the Martin Center, all of us. So we thought this might be a good setting for today's discussion about our budget planning for the 2014-15 operating year. Before I go any further, let me defer to my council colleagues, Chairman Ronnie Stein and Chairman Steve Glover, for any remarks that they'd like to make and share any guidance that they might have on goals and objectives for this meeting. Chairman Stein?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Chairman, and members of the school board. We are delighted to be here, to be in this dialogue. Back a few years ago, when the last time I was the Budget Chair, there was a row member of the school board who chaired that Budget Committee who came up with an idea that we should start this dialogue relatively early. It just so happened that he deserted you all and came to the courthouse. That's Chairman Glover. And both of us, and of course, in conjunction with you, believe that the issues are so important that a lengthier process of dialogue was going to be helpful to everyone. And so from our perspective, we view this as the first take to allow you all to set the table. In fact, we hope you all may come join us again in January, when we have even more information, to continue this dialogue, and then on through, obviously, the traditional budget process. But we believe for council to appropriately understand the issues that this longer period is going to be very helpful. And we thank you all for your willingness to participate with us, and obviously, you all are in charge of education, and this is your opportunity to help educate us a little bit better about being able to work through the system. And thank you for hosting this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Also, thank you, Madam Chair, Chairman, and members of the board for allowing us to come together. It was an idea that I had to begin the conversations earlier rather than later. I've always kind of done forecasting and tried to guesstimate, I guess maybe a good word for what I think money might do in the city. And then, given the climate and the challenges that this board is going to face, I felt it was important that we, as the council, kind of understood where you were. But I need to emphasize, I need the public to really understand, ultimately, you make the decisions when it comes to schools. The council is their own appropriating body. And so today's meeting is really more about information and allowing us to be educated, piggyback on what Chairman Stein said, but for us to be educated and to understand the challenges, because I know you will face some challenges in the coming months and over the coming next couple of years. And so thank you, Mr. Chair, for setting this meeting up and allowing us to come over here to Martin Center.
Thank you, Chairman Stein, Chairman Glover. Let me, just as we get started, I know we want to be respectful of time, I know everybody wants to get to the courthouse in time for another event that's coming up at 5:30 honoring Vice Mayor Neighbors. So let me just sort of recap where we are in the MNPS budget process right now. Because of the challenges and opportunities that we see on the rise, and the school board is being very proactive right now in planning for 2014 and '15 and beyond, we initiated our budget conversations on August 13th, maybe earlier than ever, for a coming year, and continued on September 10th. At this point, we're basically needing once a month to keep advancing the conversation as we head into the spring. To date, all we've really done is lay out some big-ticket expenditure costs that we anticipated in 2014, teacher step raises that we didn't get to do this year, inflationary adjustments, which happen every year, high-yield investments that we're going to want to continue when our federal Race to the Top funds run out, and of course, cash outlays for new charter schools, and there are other expenses. Currently, and I'll step you through the documents that you have in front of you, currently all those proposed changes add up to about $38 million in increased expenditures, about a 5 percent increase over the current year. The caveat here is these numbers are going to change. We're still five months before submitting a budget request to the mayor. Numbers could go up or down, likely up, depending on several factors, which we can talk about here tonight. We've also, in addition to laying out expenditures, laid out some areas of potential cuts in the event that we don't have enough revenue to accomplish everything we'd like to do in the next fiscal year. If MNPS gets another 2 percent increase in revenue next year, like we have gotten this year, then we're potentially facing a budget shortfall of about $23 million, which I'll explain in more detail shortly. But the bottom line is, in this kind of environment, everything needs to be on the table for consideration, both expenditures and reductions. There are no sacred cows, and for the purpose of this conversation, the school board's Budget Committee, which as you can see is a committee of the whole, would welcome your thoughts and guidance as we navigate the next few weeks and months. Point of personal privilege, I would just point out that there is no one who understands the school system's budget better than Steve Glover, and there's no one who understands the metro government budget, broader government budget, better than Ronnie Stein. So we're glad to have the opportunity to sit across the table from all of you as we talk about the work ahead. Now the materials. First, the agenda for this meeting is in front of you. It's very simple and straightforward. We're already into Section 1, which is the opening remarks. Section 2 is we're going to review the MNPS budget going back over the last several years. We'll do that in a sort of ad hoc glance fashion, and Mr. Henson is here, of course, to answer any detailed questions you had. We'll look ahead to the upcoming fiscal year, 2014-15, leave some time for discussion, and then get everybody out on time to move to the next commitments. The other documents that you got in front of you, including the agenda, are the budget summary sheets from the past six operating years, including the current year. At the last page in this attachment is the draft summary sheet for 2014-15, which, as I noted, is still very much a work in progress. These sheets are going to look familiar to you from the budget hearings in the past. And finally, you have before you a bound version of the entire MNPS budget for the current year. One more point of personal privilege, I've been around a few big governmental budgets in my time, and I can say from experience that this one is very straightforward. The credit goes to Mr. Henson. Under his leadership, MNPS in 2010 became the first school system in Tennessee to earn the Meritorious Budget Award for the Association of School Business Officials, and this award, which we've won every year since, recognizes a commitment to transparency, clarity, and accountability. And those are their words, not ours. So finally, to help frame the conversation, we put together a brief PowerPoint on the screens behind you, which will explain exactly where the MNPS budget has been, where we are, where we're going. It's just 15 slides, it'll go quickly. This is not, as one of my colleagues says, a soul-crushing PowerPoint. I just wanted to thought some historical perspective would be useful. I know you all are all hearing the same talking points, that there's no budget problem in the school system, we've given the schools all this money, how can there be any issues? So let's just start by taking a look at the school system's budget and how it's changed over the years. So the first slide kicking off is, glad that worked, is a snapshot, tracking back to the 2008-2009 operating year. We thought that was the logical place to start as a baseline. That was Mayor Dean's first budget, and the next year, 2009-2010, which was the first change beyond that baseline, was Dr. Register's first budget at MNPS. Looking back, what you see is annual average growth of 4 percent. That number actually is skewed a little high by one category of investment, which we'll talk about in a minute, but the trend line gives you a sense of the overall picture. I would note that since we're here to talk about planning for the 2014-15 operating year, all of these slides project ahead to the coming year. That's the dotted line that trails off near the end. To reiterate, next year's numbers are very much still subject to change. And I'll pause for a minute when questions, we can always go back to this slide. A little more perspective, enrollment growth is growing at a six-year rate of 13 percent. This is a fast-growing urban system, which is a rare thing, a special thing. As we said during our council budget hearing in May, we think that's directly attributable to improvement in the system as a whole, certainly Nashville's exceptional quality of life, the it city, and of course, leadership in the mayor's office and the metro council. Enrollment is up, and so is our certificated workforce, teachers in the classroom and administrators in the school building. But overall, I'll note that our workforce is down more than 500 positions over the past few years, mainly attributable to the outsourcing that occurred in the 2010-11 operating year, and you can see where that occurred on that slide. Next slide, this is very important. As you'll recall from previous budget hearings, MNPS lists budget improvements in three big categories. The first one is employee compensation, salaries, insurance, and pension increases, which actually is, employee compensation is about 80 percent of our total budget. The second big category is required additions, such as new teaching positions to accommodate growth, and also cash outlays for charter schools as required by state law. The third big category is this one that you're looking at, proposed changes, which basically are the discretionary spending on new programs, like for example, the Mayor's Music Makes Us initiative. As you can see, aggregate discretionary spending actually has gone down over the last few years. However, for 2014-15, we are anticipating a $4.4 million increase to replace, mostly to replace federal Race to the Top dollars that are running out. We definitely want to continue some high-yield investments from Race to the Top that we've realized, including our engagement with Teach for America. I'll just add on that point, there was some confusion last month about whether we wanted to sustain the TFA investment. The mayor, strangely, out of left field criticized us on this issue. I don't think his staff let him know that our budget planning has included continuing that particular investment, so hopefully that miscommunication has been fixed. We can talk more specifics about 2014-15 shortly, but first, any questions about these year-over-year numbers in the preceding slides or this one?
Can we get copies of them all at some point?
Certainly. We'll make these available on email and for the public, and media will post them online as well.
Let me ask one question. Mr. Henson, if you could, I think I remember '09-10, why there was such a large decline, but if you could also give us an answer on that particular piece, if you don't have it right now, if you can just supply it to us as we go forward.
Well, if you turn the document back to, which is, I guess, the second page?
Okay.
Which is the '09-10 operating budget. And if you start asking a lot of detailed questions, I can assure you, you're going to stump me on some of these things. But if you look at the bottom half or bottom third of the page, proposed changes, this is the section of the summary document that we're talking about, and it lays out here all of the major reductions that were being proposed, that were proposed and ultimately approved in '09-10. And so you can look down and see all of the changes, a lot of personnel changes. There was an increase in the class size as far as the staffing formula goes to schools, particularly at the middle and high school level, which is really the only area we have discretion based upon state statute that requires a certain class size. We're already at that maximum, usually at the elementary schools, except for those few enhanced option schools. So the only area of discretion or flexibility would be at the middle and high school area, and we did reduce 130 teaching positions in that year.
Any other questions about the preceding slides or this slide that we're on right now? Okay, so this is the third category, which again is in decline, but of the remaining two budget categories that are growing, employee compensation and required additions, here's what it looks like over six years. I'm sorry that that's a little hard to read. Can we hit the lights maybe on at least one side of the room so that that stands out a little bit more? So I did this slide, even I can't read what's in the blue right now. That's a lesson learned. So this is, I didn't bring my glasses with me.
Seventy-nine point eight.
Yeah, okay, so 79.8 million in employee compensation, and then 89.2 million in required additions. So those are fairly evenly split, and let's look in more detail on what it adds up to. Okay, so you can see at the end of that list that total, but you can't see it in the blue. This compensation slide is fairly self-explanatory. When you see the word "certificated," that means educators, teachers, and school administrators, and the word "support" basically is everybody else on staff. Obviously, we've got a number of salary increases, some state-made increases, some are the step increases that we do in years when we're able to. Insurance and pension adjustments are a significant part of that growth, and Mr. Henson can speak to any details here. Questions on this particular category of expenditure growth? Okay, we can come back to that. The next slide, Slide 8, we're now more than halfway through. I told you this would be not soul-crushing, very painless. Here are the required additions. Let's start at the bottom in the other line. We have transfers to the Debt Service Fund and a few smaller expenditures moving up. We obviously, like any organization, have inflationary increases for utilities and other expenses. We've added new teaching positions in situations where there are new classrooms or expanded grades in schools, or a school system that's growing. And finally, the largest part of the required additions, about two-thirds of that total, is cash outlays for new charter schools and growth in existing charters. To me, this particular slide is telling for a couple of different reasons. I think first, it clearly dispels the myth that this board is somehow hostile toward charters, when two-thirds of our required additions, which actually equals one-third of the overall six-year increase, is going to charter schools. It's frankly not credible to argue that we're anything but open to charter schools. Over the course of this six years, I would add, this school board has approved 19 new charter schools, including five in the current year, and consistently budgeted for growth in existing charters. I would further add, regardless of charters, that 25 percent of the seats in Metro Nashville Public School classrooms are choice seats, charters, magnets, and others, versus about 16 percent on average. That's something that I think we should all be proud of, especially those of you who in the council are appropriating the funds to create what is one of the most choice-friendly school systems in America. However, let's be clear, there are limits to what any school system can do within the confines of fiscal reality, and I'll go forward in a second. But any questions on this particular slide? All right. So Speaker Harwell, Mayor Dean are not going to like this slide, but the growth of charter schools, cash outlays, is not fiscally sustainable at the current rate, given the current resources. We've increased cash outlays for charter schools by 1,261 percent over the past six years. It's an average annual growth of about 58 percent versus, as we saw earlier, 4 percent in the system as a whole. Like many of you, I have been around government for a long time. We all know that nothing is sustainable at the rate that's on that screen. You may have seen the news earlier this week, we can talk about it, but Moody's Investment Service, Investor Service, one of the three agencies that assign municipal finance ratings in the U.S., issued a report on Tuesday finding the charter schools pose growing risks for urban public school districts. Some will argue that since we don't issue our own bonds and we don't have our own tax and authority, that the Moody's analysis is not applicable to us. I would argue that the underlying economics of it remain the same, and we can talk about what those are. But the bottom line is, you know, there are short-term costs associated with this, and we need to be mindful of it going forward. I would say, this editorial commentary, obviously, it would be one thing if the state were adequately funding all this charter growth, but because of inadequacies in the state basic education program formula, Davidson County taxpayers are the ones who are carrying the lion's share. In Nashville, we fund two-thirds of public education locally, which is the fourth lowest share of state funding in Tennessee. I don't see how that rate of growth in that slide can continue without some significant new revenue or deep cuts elsewhere in the system, which we're willing to entertain. I would say, one final piece of perspective, and then we can move to a bigger discussion. We are thankfully receiving a grand total of $14 million in new recurring revenue this year. We very much appreciate the council's appropriation. I would add, though, that every dime of that new revenue is being consumed by new charters and growth in existing charters. This is the first year in the school system's history that that's happened, and next year is the first time charter growth will consume every dime of new revenue, and then some, which, as I said earlier, means cuts elsewhere in the system. So we could talk about what that looks like. But questions or comments on this particular slide? Okay. So Scene 9, let's just pause for a minute and have some general Q and A. Dr. Register and Mr. Henson are obviously here to field any detailed questions you might have about where the MNPS budget has been over the past few years, so, and we can obviously rewind to the previous slides to look at those trend lines, but any questions about the last, you know, five or six years, where we've been to date? Okay. So now, why don't we do this? Mr. Henson will walk you through the draft summary sheet, which you have in your packet that we prepared for the 2014-15 operating year. Again, I'm going to sound like a broken record, I just want to reiterate, these are very preliminary numbers, this is all subject to change, but Mr. Henson, could you step us through the 2014-15 numbers?
I want to reiterate, as you can see from all four corners of the page, that this is a draft, that these numbers will change. These numbers will not look the same next time we talk about them, because they are draft, and we are very early in the process. But what we've tried to, attempted to capture, and we actually began these discussions back in August with the board's Budget and Finance Committee, what we've tried to do is capture what we believe would be the big-dollar items, looking forward, not necessarily at this point looking in detail at the existing budget. There very well may be areas where we propose reductions from what we're currently doing, but what we were looking at was if things stayed the same, knowing that they won't, what kinds of increases are we looking at? And as you can see from looking at all of the pages that you have, it's the same format year-to-year, hopefully to provide a little better understanding. The top half or third of the page relates to employee compensation, and so what we've got here is salary increases, basically a step increase for our certificated employees. As Mr. Pinkston mentioned, these would be positions that require a teaching certificate. And then we also have step increases for our support employees. You'll notice, we don't have any across-the-board raise included in this document. And at the bottom of the page, under notes, you'll see what the cost of a 1 percent raise would be if we were to provide one, which is about $5 million for all of our employees to receive a 1 percent across-the-board raise, which is not included, again, in these numbers. So you've got a step increase for all employees. We are estimating an insurance increase, and this estimate is basically based upon the increase that we have in the current year, fiscal year 14 budget. The insurance trust, which is made up of school board members and MNEA representatives and a retired teacher representative, the insurance trust sets the premium rate for our certificated employees. It's a self-insured plan. The only caveat is that the benefit program must at least meet the state insurance plan. It can exceed it, but it must at least meet it. And then our support employees, as I'm sure you're aware, as far as their benefits goes, they are considered general government employees, and their benefits are governed by the Metro Employee Benefit Board. And so we've carried forward the 5 percent increase that the Metro Employee Benefit Board approved this year, just looking forward, not knowing what that might be for fiscal year 14-15. We also have included, or haven't included, anything relating to pension cost increases. Our certificated employees are all required to be members of the state retirement plan, the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System, which is a defined benefit plan. There is an employer contribution rate that is set by the state, that we don't have any say in the matter. They tell us what that employer contribution rate is, and we pay it, but it's on a two-year cycle. This year, we're on the second year of that two-year cycle, and so we don't know what that new rate would be. And you can see, again, at the bottom of the page under the notes, that that employer contribution rate will change. We don't know what it will be. We do know we experienced about a 62 percent increase in that employer contribution rate four years ago. And again, it's all based upon how the pension funds at the state level are invested and what the actuary comes back and says, this needs to be your employer contribution rate to sustain the pension plan. And as I said, our support employees are governed by the Metro Employee Benefit Board, and so we don't know what that rate might be, that employer contribution rate, again, for a defined benefit plan. So the top third, we've got about an $8 million increase for step increases, insurance increases, nothing in there for pension increase, and nothing in there for any kind of across-the-board pay raise, an $8 million number. In the middle part of the page, we are carrying forward some of our numbers from this year regarding inflationary increases. These are mainly charges we receive from Metro for things such as self-insured liability costs, for building and contents insurance, for other kinds of charges that we have through metro government, as well as increases in utility costs, utility rate increases. So we had 3.3 million this year's budget, we just carried that forward. We also included, as Mr. Pinkston said, the increase, the projected increase on the charter school transfer, which is actually a transfer from our general purpose fund over to the charter schools fund, and then distributed out to charter schools based upon their student enrollment. We will open five new schools, and we will have a number of existing schools adding additional grades for next year, and based upon the information from our charter school office, and based upon what we believe could potentially be the per pupil amount, which is set by state law, which is state and local revenue per pupil. We've got approximately $22.8 million increase for the additional charter school students for next year. So if you look at the top half of the page, which we typically refer to as the operating budget required for baseline, which would mean providing the same level of services as prior year, about a $33.6 million increase, or 4.5 percent. Again, not looking at what's in the current budget and taking into consideration any changes that might occur as we begin our own budget discussions internally in the winter. The bottom third of the page, we talked a little bit about this earlier, the proposed changes. We do have some contracts in place where there are increases. The first one is the New Teacher Project contract. The New Teacher Project has an I-3 or investing in innovation grant through the federal government, where over time, there's an increased local match required for that contract. And then the Teach for America contract is one of several items that currently are funded with federal Race to the Top money, which will run out at the end of this year. And so we want to continue with these items that are indicated in parentheses from Race to the Top grant moving forward. And so additional $750,000 would hit the operating budget for Teach for America, even though that's the same amount as we currently have, but it's funded from a different source. We also have some other areas where we had requested increases that were approved by the board, and then when the final funding allocation became known, we had to go back and make reductions to the increases, if I like to call them. They weren't actually cuts, they were reductions to the requested increases. And so if we were to fully realize those requested increases that the board initially approved, we do have some positions in our Gifted and Talented Program for some additional teachers for projected student growth over time, over the last several years, in those different programs. Also, additional school psychologists, where we have not been adding additional school psychologists, even though over the years we've had projected student growth with our students with disabilities. We have some health services contracts that have increases. All of our school nursing services are provided by the Metro Public Health Department, and there is an increase in that contract each year. And then we also have some, a few, a handful of schools where their nursing services are provided by Vanderbilt, and then the Red Cross in the past has provided the vision and hearing screening for our students. We also have requested some additional translators for our English learner program. We've shown those here. Our English is a Second Language Endorsement Program, which is a collaboration with Lipscomb University, currently is funded from Race to the Top money. This allows some of our teachers to become dual-certified and endorsed to be able to teach English learner students, which is very cost-effective, because it allows us not to have to hire additional English learner teachers. But a lot of these students can receive those services in the regular classroom from those teachers that have this ESL endorsement. And then at the bottom, various Race to the Top personnel. We have, for instance, 12 data coaches, several data warehouse staff that are currently funded through Race to the Top money. When we're looking at wanting to continue some of what we're calling high-yield strategies, we feel like our data coaches and our data warehouse and a few other positions are very important to continue. And if we're to continue those, and the federal Race to the Top money ends, then we have to find another funding source, and so we're including them here at this point in our general purpose operating budget. So the proposed changes, subtotal a little over $4 million, takes us to the $38 million increase that Mr. Pinkston mentioned earlier, a little over a 5 percent increase. I think that takes care of the details, but if there are any questions... I think that takes care of the details, but if there are any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them.
A couple of disjointed questions, and I preface them by saying they shouldn't be interpreted any way politically. I'm just trying to give a feel for this. With the year at the bottom, putting in the cost of what would be a 1% raise, when the state of Tennessee raises teacher salaries, inevitably, I think over the years, we've always almost done more than that historically. But when that's mandated, do we get funds from them for those salaries?
Thank you for asking the question. And to your first point, there have been times when we have given more than the state required, but there have been other times when we've given the minimum. There is a, what's called a state raise, and a lot of times, people think, well, that's state-funded because it's a state raise. The raise for teachers runs through the state's BEP funding formula, which, there is a local match required. And for us, in Davidson County, where we have the highest fiscal capacity, quote unquote, that's used in that formula, basically, we only receive about half of the revenue that's required to give the required raise. And so we'll get additional revenue from the state for the raise that's being required, but it'll only typically cover about half of the total cost that we have to put in the budget. So there's always going to be an additional local amount required to give a state-required raise. We'll get additional state BEP revenue, but typically, it's only about half the amount needed.
I want to, again, preface my remark by saying, I believe our teachers should be paid lots more than they are, and I wish we could do it in lots of ways. That being said, when we hear Governor Haslam's pronouncement a few weeks ago about we're going to raise teacher salaries over the next, I don't know, however many years, I guess through the election, we're going to do that, that means that the brunt of that, not the brunt, that's right, the obligation of what he is talking about, you're saying about half of that will be mandated to us if the state does that?
If they do as they have done for the past 20 years and run the raise amount through the state's funding formula, the Basic Education Program Funding Formula, then that would be correct. There would be a local match requirement for every school district, but ours is higher than anyone else in the state, and typically, we only receive about half the revenue to give a required raise.
Again, I'm not opposed to, I just wanted us to understand that that's a factor out there that may well come sometime in the next section of the legislature. Again, only partially related to all of this. My understanding through the grapevine is that Metro's unappropriated fund balances are doing well. Has the, is the school system's doing, seems to be doing well? Do you have any sort of feel for where that's going to be as we come to this budget decision-making?
I do, and we've been fortunate, as the city has, regarding revenue projections. And just as a reminder, all of the local revenue projections, local meaning property tax revenue, local option sales tax revenue, all of those are provided to us through Metro Finance. We provide them with the state BEP funding estimate that we receive from the State Department of Education. But based upon, and I'm sure it's final by now, we exceeded our revenue projections by over $15 million, which is a good thing. We also spent approximately 99% of our budget, which left about an $8 million number. So we have added over $20 million to the fund balance based upon last year's results, which puts the school district's fund balance at approximately $76 million, which is 10.2% of operating expenditures. So we've added fairly significantly this past year, almost, well, mainly through revenue exceeding projections to the school district's fund balance.
And again, I apologize for the extreme of consciousness, and if this isn't the right place for this question, then just tell me, we can push it on, and I'm not sure exactly who will want to address it. Very clearly, I think, again, trying to predict without prejudice, questions that will come from some of my colleagues because we hear it on a regular basis. There are always questions about the cost of administration. I mean, the general public, in many ways, understands it and doesn't understand it. And this may not be the time, since this is the beginning of our dialogue, but I do anticipate that there will come a time when we will want to hear, and I understand we're doing things with audit and variety of other things down the road, but clearly, you all have a predisposition to where this school system is with the cost of our administration and where it is relative to the other parts of the budget and where we are relative to other communities. And again, I know I'm trying to be politic here. This is not necessarily a prejudice on my part, but it is a pervasive conversation that we hear, and if this is not the appropriate time, Mr. Chairman, at some point, we ought to hear a little bit about that.
No, I think it's a perfectly appropriate time. Let me take these two questions, both the fund balance, well, the central office question and then go back to the fund balance question. You know, the issue of costs of central office administration is a recurring theme, not just in your chamber, but in our boardroom as well. It is, I think, often a place that critics like to turn to for a silver bullet budget fix. There certainly are some cost savings there, and we look forward to participating in the performance audit that the Council's moving forward on, and we welcome that. And, you know, we're going to look at central office and administration, just like everywhere else. However, having observed this organization up close for the past year and having seen a few other bureaucracies over the last 20 years, I think cost savings in the central office are not going to be overly dramatic. If we cut 5% there, that's maybe a couple of million dollars, which is something we need to look at, and we will. But I think anyone who says there's a ton of low-hanging fruit there is, it's not accurate. But again, we'll go through the audit process and we'll see what that yields. I would just sort of liken it to, you know, sort of the analogy, if we did away with the State Department of Education, somehow, we would have a lot more money for public schools in Tennessee. That's just, there are limits to what you can accomplish on the margins, in my opinion. Now, on the issue of fund balance, the one thing, the only thing that made me uncomfortable about the budget process this year, my first budget cycle, was the fact that we, and the mayor and the council, and we acquiesced and kind of said, yes, that's the right thing to do, balanced our recurring budget with $12 million of our fund balance. We matched non-recurring revenue to recurring expenditures, which is kind of typically a no-no. But I think it's fine to do it in a single year. I get uncomfortable turning to the fund balance year over year in that regard. So I believe, and Mr. Henson, correct me if I'm wrong, the state law says we need to maintain at least 3% in our fund balance. Wall Street Rule of Thumb is more like 5%. I think this Board and this administration is more comfortable in the 5.5% to 6% range, which does mean, you know, there's some opportunity to spin down some of that. I would also add, we do have some significant one-time expenditures in front of us, some of which are state-mandated, that will, you know, have to potentially require some of that fund balance if the Council is willing. And I would turn to Dr. Rechter on this point. On this issue or anything else you'd like to fill in, any gaps for us?
No, I think you've explained it well. There are some pressures now, and we're, I've begun some conversations with Mr. Ribling about potential use of fund balance this year to knock the edge off increased demands on our operating budget for next year, particularly getting ready for park assessment and implementation, full implementation of the Common Core, which is a state requirement, and a couple of other possibilities there. We also recognize Metro Council expects a 5% fund balance. I think state's 3%, and I think Metro Council looks to a 5% fund balances and undesignated fund balance.
Thank you. At this point, just also say, I run into, I don't understand any of this, but I regularly run into the work that your data warehouse and that the system's doing around data in a variety of different ways, and I applaud your commitment to it. I've seen what's gone on in some of the public organizations and schools, as well as its outreach and support for things going on in the community, and I applaud you for that. And the only other thing I would say is, Chris, your comment earlier that Steve might have a question you couldn't answer, in all my years up here, I would like to hear what that question is. And thank you.
A couple of quick, I want to add, oh, this is also politically sensitive, and what I'm asking is not really to get anybody up in arms, but when the state changed the law regarding the role of the unions, is the certificated salary step, is that still a requirement, or is that something that we're honoring?
It's not a requirement because we didn't give it this year.
Okay. Second thing, if the state does mandate a 2% raise, as an example, are we, if we didn't have the fiscal capacity to honor our half of that, are we required by state law to make other cuts in order to honor that raise they mandate?
Let me answer the question two different ways. First, just explaining that if the state were to give a 2% state raise, in the past, and I assume that will occur again this year, maybe for the last time, but that is a 2% raise on the state's minimum salary schedule for teachers. Of course, our salary schedule for teachers is higher than the state's minimum salary schedule. And so if the state were to give a 2% raise, that would equate to a slightly lower amount for our, on our salary schedule to give whatever the minimum would be. Let's say it's, I'll just, I'll throw a number out, let's say it's 1.4% on ours. We would be required to give that 1.4%, and if we didn't have revenue to meet that 1.4%, then, as you said, we would need to look elsewhere for reductions to give that because that would be required to give, with or without negotiations with unions.
Okay, so that is one area that didn't change, even though the law changed with regards to the step increases. And Chairman Stein, I want to, I mean, I think we need to pay the teachers as much as we possibly can while they have a difficult and challenging job. I just want, I wanted for informational purposes to understand what the dynamics were and the changes in those dynamics after the law was passed. So thank you. And you're right, Councilman Stein, he always has the answer.
Questions, brother, council members?
I think, I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
And the, in the area where required additions, you have charter schools, five schools, additional grades in existing schools. Now, is that all pertaining to charter schools, or is that?
Yes, sir. Those are, we, the school board approved a total of five new schools in the past, in this last cycle, over the last, what was it, April? We approved four and then came back in June and approved a fifth. So those new schools are built into that amount, plus growth in existing schools, schools that are adding grades.
Existing charter schools.
Yes, sir.
So if, and trust me, I'm not a mathematician, so correct me if I'm wrong here, but if you reduced, if you eliminated the entire 2013-14 employee compensation and all the proposed changes, if you eliminated that from the budget, it would basically equal out to what your budget is for 2014 or 2013 for just charter schools? Is that right?
Yes, that's roughly, close.
So you'd have to do some major sacrifices just to provide charter schools?
Yes.
Thank you.
And, you know, and we're prepared to do that, and we'll look at the next slide, which is a graphic depiction of what Mr. Henson had. But before we go there, just in the category of everything is subject to change, these numbers are very fluid. Let me give you two quick examples. One is what we've already been talking about at the table, which is Governor Haslam's teacher salary initiative. That is a brand-new development that we did not anticipate when we put together the draft, the summary sheet for 2014-15 earlier this month. I mean, the governor basically put the local school boards on notice that he expects us to help cover these teacher pay increases that he's going to propose. As we all do, we all support the concept, but the reality is, it's going to require funds that we didn't anticipate even when we put this sheet together just 60 days ago. The second is another antipost that we have not discussed previously, but we've talked about it in our boardroom, but I think we're going to be talking about it more openly in the coming months ahead, is expanding Metro Nashville Public Schools' early childhood education offerings. Over the past few years, we, along with every other school system in the state, have been waiting on the state to provide more pre-K funding. It's clear that the governor and Speaker Harwell and others don't have the political will to proceed in that direction. I would personally advocate that we take a page from what's happening in Memphis under the leadership of Mayor Wharton there and move forward with pre-K expansion on our own down there. They're considering a new revenue measure to fund it here. I think we can begin this work out of normal revenue growth if the mayor and the council and obviously the school board are amenable, but that's going to mean prioritizing that investment ahead of, or at least alongside, cash outlets for new charter schools. We cannot do everything, but I think we can accomplish a lot if we adopt a more balanced approach to investments. So this is the graphic depiction of what Mr. Henson stepped you through. On the left is that, the summary of changes in that sheet. The blue block represents the employee compensation changes at the top of the summary sheet. The yellow block represents the series of proposed changes at the bottom of the page, including the TFA contact, contract, Race to the Top-related positions and other items. And the red block in the middle represents the so-called required additions in the middle of that page. Obviously, it's this red block where we've got the most opportunities and challenges. To put it in perspective, 89% of that block, about $22.7 million, or everything below the dotted line, is to fund charter growth, new schools and growth in existing schools. Meanwhile, on the right, it's a revenue assumption, and some people have criticized us for making this assumption and claimed that we are somehow, quote-unquote, "estimating revenue" in violation of the Metro Charter. To be clear, no one in this room is estimating revenue. We just happen to believe that making conservative projections for planning purposes is the responsible thing to do when we're approaching a government budget. Taxpayers and families make assumptions every day in balancing household budgets. I think that's what they expect from us. For this particular scenario, I am assuming our current rate of revenue growth, 2%. That's what we're getting in recurring growth this year. We're assuming that for this scenario for next year. Mr. Hayes and I have gone back and forth in our boardroom on this assumption. His point, which is very well taken, is that revenue could come in higher, and we hope that it does. However, if the economy is roaring ahead and it's 3% or 4% growth, we're still facing a shortfall based on the current projected expenditure growth, and that's assuming that we're not competing with other Metro Government obligations like unfunded pension liabilities. And that's also before we factor in other new costs, like the governor's teacher pay initiative or our own desire, potential desire to invest in early childhood education. So the bottom line is, in a budget like ours, where employees account for 80% of the total, there really are not a lot of places where you can achieve meaningful savings, other than workforce reductions. And I think we're willing to talk about that, along with some other things. We've got to seriously look at what we call our high-leverage options on this next slide. None of it's appealing, but we've already started these conversations in our budget committee last month, and we're continuing to flesh out ideas. Here are, in our estimation, in our discussions with each other and in consultation with Dr. Rechter and Mr. Henson, the big levers that we can look at. I'm going to come back to the top option in a minute, but with regard to the second and third options, we are considering reducing our certificated workforce, teachers, perhaps by offering them early retirement and buyout packages. We've been very clear in our conversations with the public and the press that we are not contemplating layoffs or involuntary reductions in Metro Nashville Public Schools. However, we might look at some creative ways to go about incenting early retirements and other forms of buyouts, as Metro Government has done in general government. If we do that, that's going to require potentially some increased class sizes in the middle and high schools. We're not wild about that option, but we do have some flexibility under state law if needed. We're also not keen on that bottom option, eliminating our enhanced option schools, which provide high-touch educational services to some of our most at-risk populations. But as I said earlier, we have all the options on the table. As a starting point, and this has gotten a lot of attention and will continue to, I'm sure, we have got to at least look at the school systems, underutilized facilities, which right now are concentrated in North and East Nashville. There is concern in the community about it, and there's some disagreement even on our Board about whether or not to seriously consider this option, but again, I think as a, for conversation point, it needs to be on the table.
May I ask you a couple, and maybe you're going to cover it?
Yes, sir.
And if you're going to, just say if we're covering it in the coming slides. What wiggle room do you have as far as middle and high school teacher-student ratio is concerned?
I defer to Dr. Rechter and Mr. Henson.
Mr. Glover, we have some, but it's programming. We've allotted teachers to our high schools to accommodate academies. We've allotted teachers to our high schools to accommodate academies in small learning communities, and so we actually have a broader curriculum than state mandated class size would determine, so we could tighten up some that there would be a negative impact on programming at the high schools.
Other questions about these high-leverage?
Just a quick question on the, maybe we haven't gone through this deeply, but reducing certificated workforce, so we typically hire 500 to 600 people a year, would it be no new hires or no new hires plus our contract? So it's a, we don't hire 400 new people and maybe lay off 100 or 200?
Yeah, excellent point. Not, we're not laying on, I mean, we'll talk about that, but I think where we are is, thank you for clarifying, where we are is we can reduce the rate of new hires because some of this is the attrition, and then the remainder, the remaining positions that need to be eliminated could be incentivized through early retirements or buyouts.
And the elimination would come because the person that we may have may not be aligned to the need.
Correct.
But we likely still would be hiring new teachers unless we have draconian cuts.
Yeah, so.
The workforce reduction would come around if we had such a thing, changing our programs.
Yeah, I mean, so this is not a conversation we've had in a lot of detail in the boardroom. We've had it once in our Budget Committee. Mr. Henson and Dr. Register and staff are exploring sort of scenarios, which will surface in the next Budget Committee hearing, but what Mr. Hayes says is correct. You know, we'll look to do that in a targeted, strategic way if that's a direction we go forward. Dr. Register, is that fair?
Let me just make sure that I understand this, and I think I do. I've just been around too long and been in too many discussions that it ended up as a headline that is far more dramatic than the discussion. These are discussion points.
Thank you.
There is nothing set in stone about these, I understand, so for anybody who is concerned about it at this point, they probably shouldn't be because, based on what you're saying, none of this discussion is far enough along that should make anybody afraid. You're just looking at a lot of things.
Correct. These are options, not decisions, and this is part of the conversation. Council?
Can you spend a little time talking about the consolidation and closing of the underutilized buildings, what your thinking is around that?
Okay. So I'll take a page from my chair, I have a chair's playbook, and what she said, and I'll let you reiterate it. I missed the last board meeting, but if you want to reiterate kind of what happened at the end of public participation relative to what we're doing.
Basically, we talked about, well, the comments that I made were based on public participation comments and the concern about closing schools, and what I said was there is no proposal on the table to close any schools, and that is, you know, thank you, Chair Stein, that is where we are. These are all items of discussion. One of the things that we have to consider is, the reason this even came up was because we have to look at all the options. And unfortunately, part of those options is to consider how our schools are being underutilized. How is that happening? We have a very large population of charter schools in one area, and a direct result of that is the lower, underutilized schools are traditional public schools. So you can see how the trends are going. It is part of our overall picture. We have to look at the options, but absolutely not that any proposal is on the table for closing these schools right now. So that's kind of where that conversation started, with the public participation.
We also could see, we have a handful of charter schools where our investments weren't meeting our expectations. You know, as Dr. Register and I've talked over the years about, and Mr. Pinkson as well, around trying to use charters as a way to lessen our capital commitments. So if we look to Anion, for example, which is high growth, where we can't build schools fast enough, can we incent charters to go there? And it's difficult, Dr. Register's expressed some concern with long-range planning for a contract vendor, right? Where we don't know if they're going to be there. Can we guarantee that that person's going to be in business three or five years from now? The same thing holds with a handful of charter schools where the investment isn't meeting our expectation. If those are closed in a year or two, we could see a significant number of students come back into MNPS, so we may want to look two, three, four years out and look at how many kids may come back or may enter choice schools. We may look to co-locate charter programs and incubate charter programs in those schools. The capital needs committee has not meant to walk through the schools, to look at the buildings, to see what we have, right, what's available. So it could be consolidation, it could be we see a way that students come back, but they're all things that will be discussed throughout the fall.
So we're at the bottom of the hour, which means we're two-thirds of the way through in order to keep everybody on time and on schedule, but let's look at the map of where these underutilized buildings are. This was a map that management staff produced at our request. These are the 12 underutilized school buildings in Metro Nashville Public Schools. Underutilized defined as less than 70 percent capacity. In this group, we have three high schools and nine elementary and middle schools. Those are the schools in the blue. There are other schools on that map, MNPS schools, that are kind of in, you know, in the darker colors, but the blue we asked to highlight just to, so it's easy to see. And so that's that. Now, from the next slide, you can see what's happening. These 12 underutilized buildings, which we're looking at there, have been surrounded by 16 charter schools, soon to be 19 after this year's round of approvals. Obviously, there are a lot of different reasons why any given building might be under capacity. Some schools are going to be affected more by charter proliferation than others. Overall, demographic shift certainly a part of the reason for utilization issues, but I would submit that it's no coincidence that these underutilized school buildings are basically encircled by charters in the red. Now, and let me pause and ask my former colleague, Dr. Gentry, for.
So I don't have a question, and you guys know I'm sort of big on semantics, and I don't like the term "underutilized." We have several schools that have capacity to educate more students. We have several schools that have open seats for students. Though, at the end of the day, if you look at the areas where we're struggling with this issue, there are still students with needs. You know, I think Mr. Stein's comment was, not trying to be political. I don't know if I'm trying to be political or not, I'm just going to be very clear, that if you reflect on some of the earlier slides, our growth of students in Metro Public Schools is not slowing down, and we still have students that need to be educated. And if this were any other line of business, setting, understanding that it sits under the same umbrella, we would be highly criticized for poor management of the growth of our schools. However, we have, our hands are significantly tied with those entities in red. And so I think, you know, even though I get the sense that there was a glossing over of some of the data that was shared with regards to charter school growth and its fiscal impact on Metro Public Schools, but I want to be clear is that this is not a board that is, quote-unquote, "anti-charter." We are about appropriate management of the resources that we have, and we cannot continue to fight the anti-charter moniker at the risk of being anti-Metro Public Schools. And that's going to reflect itself if we are forced to make cuts that are directly related to the quality of education that we're able to provide. Then you find yourself in this self-fulfilling prophecy that we become victims of the cut criticism that we consistently receive. So I just wanted to say it, wanted to put it out there, so that as we go further along in the next steps of this budgeting process, that it becomes more of a two-way street. And I know that you guys are getting information and you're becoming informed and educated around this process, but we are looking for some support and some assistance in how we change this, I guess, impending issue that we're going to be faced with, so we're still able to provide the services that we are required to provide to the students that are coming to us, looking for quality education and looking for, I can't even name, the other types of support that our students are required to have, that they need in order to get to that point of receiving a quality education. We do not have the ability to turn students away, nor do we have the desire to turn students away or to handpick the students that we educate in our schools. What we're asking for is to continue to have the capacity and the resources to provide those students with the services that they need.
Also.
Let me echo what I made. One of the reasons that I wanted to see this dialogue begin was for that very reason, where hopefully we in the chamber are able to support what you guys will ultimately end up doing, because you are facing some very challenging times. You're going to have to make some very difficult decisions, and that ultimately is, was my goal, is that we are able to understand and we can support you in what you do, and then ultimately, hopefully express to the public why you're having to make some of our decisions you may have to make. And yes, this is only informational, and the sky is not falling, but I applaud you all for taking the work that you're doing now and for being willing to, I guess, lift every rock and make sure that you're looking at every area of efficiencies or perhaps non-efficiencies that are going on within the PIS.
Chair. Yes.
If I could ask a question, and thank you for this presentation, it's been very informative. Mr. Henson, could you just expand a little bit on the line item, reduction of staff at Cameron Middle? Could you just tell me what's going on there a little bit more?
And Cameron Middle, the charter conversion? It was an agreement that was reached with the State Department of Education where the school district basically submitted requests for proposals to charter operators to convert Cameron into a charter school, one grade at a time. Current year, grades five, six, and seven are under charter management, and grade eight is an MNPS school. Next year, all four grades, grades five through eight, will be included in the charter management authority, and so we have some site-based staff at Cameron, such as a principal and a bookkeeper and other kinds of site-based staff that we will no longer have once that building is fully under the auspices of the charter management group. And so that's what that's reflecting.
And so that 845 FTE goes on, those are staff, those are not eighth-grade teachers?
Those are basically staff members, and.
What becomes of the eighth-grade teachers? The eighth-grade teachers, the MNPS eighth-grade teacher, when need takes over the eighth grade, what becomes of the eighth-grade teachers?
Well, I think those are also.
Does that include the 845?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'll just point out, we'll have a similar situation in fiscal year 16 with Brick Church. Brick Church currently is fifth and sixth grade charter, seventh and eighth grade MNPS. So in fiscal year 15-16, Brick Church will be a similar kind of scenario, and the assumption, we don't have that included on here yet. Again, this is a draft document created in August, so we may go back and look to see if that's an area where there might be some teacher reduction where, when we look at the overall student projections for next year.
Okay, so the conversion situation is one where the impact of the charter school outlet, if you will, is muted somewhat, because you've got a $520,000 reduction. You're offsetting that against outlets, correct?
We're doing that one out specifically on this document, just to make everyone aware. We don't have anything in here for additional teachers or teacher reductions or anything relating to overall student projection numbers for next year, so all of that will be taken into consideration, but I felt it important to point out the fact that we will have the reduction at Cameron for sure with the site-based staff. We're not going to need a principal there, we're not going to need a bookkeeper there, several staff members, but we went ahead and included all the staff at Cameron for this purpose.
Sorry, I need to go.
He was just saying that there would also be an increase in the charter numbers, but that's already reflected here in the $22.48 million increase.
Okay. And the one question, just to keep it in view, when we talk about population, number of students, it seems to be somewhat different numbers between the numbers the state uses and what we use. Can you define population?
What do you mean by population?
The student population. Is that, is that the average daily attendance across all our schools, or is that?
There's a number of ways to define it.
And how are we defining it in these slides?
We're defining it as student enrollment. If you look at, for instance, if you look at the state report card and you look at enrollment numbers, average daily membership, ADM, is student enrollment. The state, when they report out numbers, they typically report out K-12 kindergarten through 12th grade numbers. When we report out numbers, we report out pre-K through 12 numbers, and so there's always going to be that one difference there. But even with the State Department's numbers on their state report card, if you were to look at total number of students, and then when they break the students down, for instance, between male and female, they don't match. If you add those two together, they don't match the total number of students that's indicated at the top of the page. And there's just a number of ways to calculate numbers of students. Average daily membership is student enrollment, average daily attendance is another way, which is always going to be less because it's a calculation based upon number of days present. And so we typically try to use student enrollment because that's what the state's funding formula, the BEP, is based upon, and that's what we need to provide services for, would be the number of students enrolled, not necessarily how many are present in class on any particular day.
Is that enrollment on day one or on day 180?
Again, multiple answers to that question. There are nine student attendance reporting periods, nine 20-day student attendance reporting periods, which makes up 180 days. The state funding formula, the BEP, bases the calculation on student attendance reporting periods two, three, six, and seven, and they're weighted. They're more heavily weighted toward months six and, or toward periods six and seven, they're 35 percent apiece. We typically use as our official numbers the 40th day, which would be the second reporting period, because by then, things have settled down since the beginning of the year. So we have historically tried to use the 40th day as our official number of students enrolled for that particular year.
And if that's the number that we've had on the slides?
Yes.
40th day?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
And I just, again, want to point out that we are a rarity, as much as we are a vast growing urban school system. That line, and a lot of other big cities in the country, looks very different, and I think we should all be proud of that. I mean, it says something about the improvement in the system and the quality of life in the community and, you know, and the leadership of the council members around this table as well as the mayor, but I mean, it's rare. I'm all over the country, and it's not a typical thing. I just want to reflect back on this slide for one more minute. The, again, just to be clear, we've got 12 underutilized buildings on that map. They are surrounded by 16 charter schools. There are three more that are going to come into existence next year in those same areas of town, and at the same time, the existing charter schools are going to continue to add grades and classroom seats, many of them. So at the rate we're going, we are going to see more traditional existing school buildings in those areas move into that blue underutilized column. So I think we, the decision point that we're reaching as a school system and as a community is frankly, how many more new schools of any kind are we able to sustain fiscally and operationally? And it's not a question that we're going to be able to answer in this room today, but talking with the constituent about this, I use the analogy of a restaurant chain. If we're operating a chain of McDonald's and along comes Burger King to build two stores for every one of ours, then we're dividing up the customer base, and that's what the mayor and our friends in the front row over there wanted to happen, but the net effect is we've now got some half-empty buildings, and I think we all agree that that's not acceptable from a budget or an operational perspective. So we may have some tough decisions ahead. It's not, no, nothing's been decided. To reiterate something that's been said here multiple times, but that is the visual of what's going on. One more fiscal challenge I'll point out here is, in addition to charters consuming all new available revenue, there are some hidden costs here that we have not yet begun to acknowledge. For example, Metro Government is still paying debt service on some of those underutilized buildings, and in that case, the analogy is, it's kind of like moving out of a house before you finish paying off the mortgage and then buying two new houses to replace the first one. Again, not fiscally sustainable. We've asked Metro Finance for details on debt service in those specific buildings, but they tell us it can't be calculated because debt service for the schools is rolled up and intermingled with the broader Metro Government debt service. So just one other thing to keep in mind as we think through the net, overall net costs. So, bottom line is, you know, we've got some difficult decisions to make on the school board, but this committee, this board, and the leadership of this board, to my left and right, are up to the challenge. We want to approach this one in a thoughtful, responsible, transparent way, do so in partnership with the mayor and the council. Again, our agenda here was not to do anything other
But we're coming up to the top of the hour, 5 o'clock. I guess before we have any additional questions from council members, I've a little bit hogged this meeting, so I defer to any other of my board colleagues to see if maybe start here and go that way, if anybody else had comments or observations.
My other comment is to thank the council members that came today. We really do appreciate your support, and I know it's time out of your day to come and, and look at numbers, and not everybody thinks numbers are real exciting. I happen to like them, but not everybody shares their opinion. So I really do appreciate your being here, and I know that there are a lot of your colleagues that are on the one committee or the other, and I wish that they could have been here to, to hear this, but I really do look forward to working with all of y'all toward this budgeting process, because it will be difficult steps. Thank you.
Oh, any comments? Well, I do, a little bit. I echo everyone else. Thank you for joining us and engaging in this conversation. I mean, I think that the choices, I mean, this does illustrate that we do face some interesting, difficult choices ahead. One thing, though, I do want to call out, and I do this at every single meeting, I know Dr. Regis is probably tired, and the same is every time, but I do think that as we forge ahead, it would be good to get unity and clarity and alignment on what we all value. And I would love to hear that from council in terms of what you all expect us to optimize for, because I will put forth that what we're trying to optimize for is student achievement. And if we think of it that way, then I would actually suggest that we look at a lot of different data points in relation to the budget. So for example, to the discussion, extensive discussion about charters, about 5% of our kids are in charters, about 5% of the budget goes to charters. So that doesn't suggest to me, anyway, that they are taking some giant lion's share of the budget. Another interesting stat, we just, the, the board has been very aggressively engaging in holding ourselves accountable to the progress of each of our schools via an academic performance framework. And what we've seen in this is that right now, we have 11 schools that are in the green, excelling by our own measures, which are comprehensive and I think incredibly smart what Paul Changas and company have done. And what we see there is that four of the 11 schools, in fact, are charters, which represents roughly 36% of all excelling schools, even though charters themselves represent 11% of all MNPS schools. So again, I'm not, so this conversation isn't about, I would like for this conversation to extend beyond charters versus this versus this. Personally, I think that we should be agnostic about who is providing the services, as long as they're providing great services. And so the numbers that I would love to drill down on in future discussions is optimizing for student achievement and making that part of the whole conversation. And of course, we want to do that in the most responsible way. That's my... I'll make it. Hold on, make it. One final comment. And this will be very simplistic. The only way for us to stop talking about, or stop discussing or giving credit to an us-versus-them mentality is that we stop it right now. Because we can, we sit around this table and we talk, we don't want to talk about, we're not anti-charter, we're not pro-this or pro-that, or anti-that. We need to stop it right now. That's the only way that it's ever going to stop. So, thank you, Ms. Kim, I agree with you. We need to start looking at the overall academic success of our children, regardless of where they're educated. But the reality is, we've got to still look at how the funding is, is being done. So stopping talking about charters is one thing, or stopping talking about traditional or, you know, magnets or whatever, that's fantastic. But we've still got to address the issue. So I agree with you. It's got to be overall, how do we educate our children, period. So, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments from our council colleagues?
Thank you. Thank you for this, I mean, for signing two out. One is the chairman of the voting committee, to say that information here will be transmitted to colleagues, they will know of this discussion, and they will obviously join in. I also want to say that most of us realize that you all were elected to make a lot of these decisions up here, virtually all of them, as a matter of fact. And except for a rather large decision, we all can have our individual voices and can try to express those to you and convince you of, of our points of view, but in our system, you all are the ones in charge of making this decision, which is great for us to hear the thought processes you're going through at this point, which will help us understand more as we get to our part of the process. So that's with my chair hat. Take my chair hat off and put on my Ronnie Stein hat as a person who has dedicated about half of my adult life to the young people of this community, and say to you all that feeling in the middle of some of the political debates, really for the first time, because usually I'm on one side or the other of something, and I really feel like I'm in the middle. It is my perspective, as you were looking for perspectives, that all of the schools we've talked about and that you are talking about are public schools. All of the young people in those schools are our young people. And it's, again, I guess this sounds like I'm Pollyanna, but I believe we all need to be about building a community that values and nurtures those young people not only to achieve in school, but to be successful in their lives. And so to the extent that we can carry this dialogue to a place devoid of personality, where we really talk about the best ways to, to get this entire community in its total, in totality, to that point. I mean, those of us on the council, well, I just speak for myself, I on the council frequently feel some frustration simply because obviously the decisions that the school system, you're elected to do and I'm not, but I am elected to work on the other 80% of those young people's lives, and frequently feel like we are far short as a community to support those young people, to maximize what they can, and their families, to maximize what they can do in school. I think this dialogue is going to be hugely helpful going forward, and I thank you all for inviting us here for it to begin. And as I say, we are smaller in numbers than we ought to be, but it will be well communicated to them, and we will bring them along into the dialogue. Thank you.
We're available for encore presentations, by the way. Any other from this side of the table? Council Lady Evans?
I really do appreciate the meeting and the conversation and the elimination from Mr. Henson, oh, that's wonderful. The, this is thanks to mentioned earlier, the MDP's credit report, and he's, was correct to point out that MNPS is different from 85% of the school districts for which that report was written in, in America, in that it isn't an independent jurisdiction. And as such, it has a wonderful opportunity that a lot of school districts in America don't have. And primarily, because MNPS is so integrated with our government as a whole, there are opportunities for us to work together, to share costs. Illinois, which has got more school districts than charters got filled, has now started doing shared service agreements because they need to save money. MNPS and the school situation is not unique. You know, we've watched, as council members, our parks department, our public works department, codes department, get cut to the bone, and we still have always found a way to fund schools, and we're still going to find a way to fund schools. But as we move forward, I would challenge school board members to start thinking about our education function as a city a little outside the box and a little less traditionally. And perhaps the business that we want you in is this education of children. That's what I want to see. I want to see you in the business of educating children, and maybe look to us to help you get out of the business of transportation, the business of building maintenance and management, and the business of, of back office function. Because we do those things pretty well, and, and we've found that over the years, if firemen can just fight fires and not have to worry about their fleet, and not have to worry about their HR department, we do a really good job of fighting fires. And I think the same could be true here. So, so you're not in a unique position. We've been through it here now for a number of years, and I think we could probably offer a great deal of, of help, so that you can meet these challenges without significantly impacting.
Thank you. Council Lady Allen, welcome. Any, any, we can stay behind and chat, but any, anything on your, my...
I'm going to take the last 60 seconds here, just to say...
Yes, sir.
My position today is what my position was multiple years ago when I first begun on my journey in the education of children in Nashville. I want an exceptional education for every child in Nashville. That takes on a number of different faces, because all children learn, or most children learn differently. Though, you know, not every child learns exactly the same way. So I think the challenge that we face today is realizing there may be budgetary restraints. But the goal still must be that we give an exceptional education to every child, because if we miss, if we miss one year, if we have a bad teacher in the classroom for that year, we can never make that year up for that child, ever. And so that's one of the reasons I wanted to have the discussion, and, and again, I want to emphasize what Councilman Stein said, this was for informational purposes only today, the sky is not falling, but I do applaud the board, and I'll say it again, I do applaud the board for taking this initiative and for allowing us to be a part of the discussion, because you certainly don't have to, but we, we, I thank you personally, as Chair of Education, I thank you for allowing us to be a part of this discussion and, you know, understanding your thought process. So, Mr. Chair, Madam Chair, thank you very much for this opportunity to have, have the talk today.
Thank you. Thank you. Dr. Regis, Mr. Henson, anything that we didn't cover that we need to mention?
So, so thank you for, Metro council members for being here. We appreciate the opportunity to talk about this earlier than usual, and we'll look forward to continuing this conversation. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, pardon the applause.
No, I think we've said enough.
Everyone, thank you for being here, and we look forward to continuing the conversation. Have a great evening.